Good to me, I hereby declare this meeting in the Conshohocken Borough Council duly open and ready to conduct any business that may come before it. Before the meeting tonight, we did have an executive session on legal matter, property matter, and personnel matter. The first item on our agenda is Valley Forge Tourism Presentation from Rachel Riley, Director of Communications. Rachel, good evening.
Hi, yes, good evening. Thank you so much for having me. Is this, yep, sorry, thank you. Hi, good to see you again. Thanks so much for setting this up. So as you said, I'm the Director of Communications for the Valley Forge Tourism and Convention Board, and part of my job is to go around to all of our 62 municipalities and just let them know who we are, if you don't already, and talk about what we do, and give you some updates, and that's what I'm here to do tonight. So even though we are the Valley Forge Tourism and Convention Board, we do represent all of Montgomery County, we just associate with the name Valley Forge because it's nationally and internationally known, whereas there's about seventeen Montgomery Counties in the United States, so we do that just to differentiate ourselves, but we do promote all of Montgomery County as a tourism destination. And part of the way we do that is to bring people in overnight because we're funded by the hotel tax, as you can see, and what we did in the last year or so was come up with a three-year strategic plan. So we are a nonprofit business, and we do, you know, look to the future to see what else we can do, how else we can promote Monco, and we came up with a brand-new mission and a brand-new vision. So previously, our mission statement was pretty long, lots of people's are, but now there's a bigger trend in coming up with shorter, more to-the-point statements, and that's why we came up with "Our mission is to inspire the world to fall in love with Montgomery County, PA." Sounds pretty simple, right? It's a very fun job, and we'd love to do it, and our vision is to make Montgomery County, PA, a must-experience destination, and we are rooted in the past and leading the future. So we have this great combination here in our county of history such as Valley Forge National Historical Park, but we also have so much innovation, technologies, and things like that, so that's, you know, why we combine those two, to have that juxtaposition of both that history and that future piece. We are membership-based, so we have actually now more than 650 members, and we represent everything from in our county, we have seventy-five hotels, sixteen-hundred restaurants, fifty-three golf courses, a lot of people don't know we have that many, it's actually 300,000 yards to play, almost 100 miles of trails, family-friendly attractions, and more than 200 arts and culture venues. And so, right here in Conshohocken, we actually have several members, the Edwards-Freeman Nut Company, Riverbend Cycles, Coyote Crossing, Lucky Dog right down the street, the Marriott Conshohocken, the Chub, and Skookel River Trail are also members, and we work to promote them. And even though we have those members, we'd love to have more members, and that's part of why I go around to our towns to let them know how we are promoting our towns and our members, and to hopefully, you know, gain more so that we can continue to work together to promote your town as well as the county as a whole. Tourism's big business, a lot of people don't know that, it accounts for 1.65 billion, with a B, dollars in Montgomery County spending, and it also accounts for 20,000 jobs, so it's actually a good chunk of our percentage of employment here in Montgomery County. And as you can see, more than 2 million people visit Monco and actually stay overnight right here in our county. And part of the way that we promote Montgomery County is using brands. So we have everything to represent all of those different categories and facets that I told you about, from our Crave-Monco brand to represent our restaurants, to our Patriot Trails representing history, golf, meetings, weddings, arts, everything that you can think of that falls under those umbrellas, and we use those different brands to, again, associate Montgomery County as well as our Valley Forge hierarchy of our brands. And one of the ways that we use our advertising dollars and marketing is out-of-TV market campaigns. So this summer, we actually came up with a brand-new concept of two colonial soldiers going around Montgomery County and experiencing things like family-friendly attractions with a couple of kids, and it was actually inspired by our brand-new comic book which we started last year, we're on our third edition, and the comic book, again, uses that concept of getting kids off of their screens, getting back into reading something, and just a different way of looking at history and connecting with another generation of families. And so hopefully, this video will play, and you can get a taste for our ad campaign that's running this summer in the northern New Jersey area, New York, we go down as far as DC, and out in the Harrisburg area as well. So no audio, so I'm just gonna talk, but as you can see, we went to Valley Forge National Historical Park, we actually worked with a director who's worked on such films as Six Cents, no, it wasn't M. Night Shyamalan, but it was someone he worked with, so he helped us out on that at the park, we went to hotels, we went to the Elmo Parks Zoo in Norristown, and different locations, a funny, you know, lighthearted type of piece that we're just trying to connect with families, particularly different demographics, you know, that having that diversity piece, so that everyone knows there's lots of fun, different things to do right here in Montgomery County, PA. And part of the other things, as the video plays out, I'll probably cut it short, but part of the other things that we do when we work with our members is we provide them with things like sales leads, we also bring national and international press to the area, so we raise awareness about Montgomery County, PA, that way as well. And then we also have networking events that our members can be part of, we have co-op advertising, and they get free listings in some of our guides, which I'll talk to in just a second, and on our website, where we have more than 2 million views each year, so that's some of the benefits that we provide to our members. As you can see, the visitor experience that we provide is still in a tangible print form because we have found that even though everything's online, you can find everything on your phone, people, when they visit places, still want to hold something in their hands to flip through, and so that's why we still continue to create these guides, and it's a great benefit to our members as well. So we do an annual visitor's guide, an annual Monco golf guide, we have our third edition of the comic book Patriot Tales that just came out, we'll have a fourth one in December, and we also have our Crave-Monco Dining Guide that comes out twice a year, and our Arts-Monco Guide which also comes out twice a year. And combined, those guides go to more than 150,000 people in anywhere from a 10-mile to 20- to 150-mile radius all throughout the region. And so, part of what I do is public relations, and I apologize, that slide came through a little bit rough there, but in the last year, we increased our messaging about Montgomery County, PA, as you can see, to more than 89% of our articles, excuse me, our articles went up, and actually, this year, this is from 2017 to 2018, in 2019, we increased that again, 75%, so we went from last year having almost 600 articles about Monco to more than 800 so far this year, and our reach is about 90 million people, so 90 million people nationally and globally, that goes internationally as well, because we work with that international press, know about Montgomery County, PA, so something that's pretty cool. And then our social media following, we have more than 150,000 followers total on our social media channels, so part of that awareness with our towns, we just like to let them know that we're here, where we are, and to follow us on our social accounts to interact with us, you know, if there's festivals or things like that in town, we already work with Conshohocken on some of those, we can promote those on our channel, we can do giveaways, Facebook Lives, and that's yet another way that we have an added benefit to our members to promote them, especially for small businesses, mom-and-pops, entrepreneurs who may not have those big marketing dollars. We have a mascot, some folks may or may not know Monty, Montgomery Fox, he is used in some of our marketing campaigns, we do a lot with our local universities and colleges since we have quite a few right here in the Montgomery County area, and so we use him in some of those advertising photos, and we do fun videos with him that have actually won awards, so he's just yet another way to show kind of that face of travel, and a fun way to bring attention to Montgomery County. And we have a kiosk that actually travels around to some events in Montgomery County as well, I believe it was at the Conshohocken Arts Festival recently, and that's where we have a staff member come, Monty may or may not join him, we have a branded Mini Cooper, and we staff it just to make sure that folks know, hey, there's lots going on in Conshohocken, and there's more that you can do even throughout Montgomery County as well. One of our latest brands is called Monco Makers. So in Monco, we have more than 30 award-winning breweries, wineries, and distilleries, and so we came up with this concept of the makers, the people who are making those craft brews, those, you know, vintages, and those wine, and those cocktails. So we put that all together, and we have a website, moncomakers.com, and this is yet one more way that we're promoting everything in Montgomery County. So there is another video, I apologize that this sound's not working, but we went around to different breweries, wineries, and distilleries, and just showed the different way that they make some of the beer, some of the cocktails, some of the wine, and, you know, short little clips, great for social, to show kind of that variety of what there is right here in Monco, especially craft brews, we have the most of those, more than 24, I believe now, and it's such a hot trend, so we want people to know that this is a destination they can come to, and enjoy that here, plus everything else that we have to offer. One of our other campaigns is called Embark Monco. So some folks may or may not know that the National Dog Show that airs on Thanksgiving Day on NBC every year is actually filmed right here in Montgomery County at the Greater Philadelphia Expo Center in Oaks, and because of that, we started thinking about, hey, those dogs that come here, they stay in Montgomery County, and almost 30, or actually more than 30 of our hotels are pet-friendly. So we came up with this campaign that no longer do you have to worry about, you know, where to board Fido, or get a friend to watch your house sit, you can bring him with you, bring your furry best friend with you, and you can enjoy things like the hotels, we do have another video that I'm just gonna let play while I talk because there's no sound, but you can enjoy the cute puppies while I speak. They can enjoy things like dog-friendly restaurants, there's outdoor seating, some restaurants, including, there's quite a few right here in town, that offer a dog menu, they have homemade biscuits, and different little treats for the pups, as you can see, Shake Shack, that dog was enjoying that biscuit. And we also have trails, so there's lots of different things that people can do, they can bring them to the National Historical Park, you know, and let them run free with their friends. And of course, stay the weekend, that's our prime messaging that we want to get across to folks. And then one of our more recent campaigns is Monco Wellness, so again, getting back to that idea of unplugging and relaxing, and you can do that right here in Monco, so we wanted to promote those trails, different places that you can exercise, you can do yoga, you can float here, you can enjoy a massage, you can go kayaking, canoeing, all those sorts of things, and of course, the John James Audubon Center in Oaks, which just created a brand-new, very big museum, and a family-friendly kids' piece outside. So we wanted to put all of that together in this idea of wellness, and kind of bring people back, you know, to that center to focus on themselves and have a place that they could come to enjoy it. Also on our website, besides those campaigns that I talked about, you can book your room now through JackRabbit, so when you go to valleyforge.org, you don't have to go to a hotel website, it's one-stop shopping, you can book your room, we have links to buy tickets, and we're also ADA compliant, we're one of the first in the region to work with a company called AudioEye, so when you go to our website, there's a little man you can see on the icon there, that if you click, someone who has special needs can adapt the webpage to whatever they, tailored to their needs, so if they need to hear something instead of seeing it, if the print needs to be larger, all those sorts of things, they can do right on valleyforge.org. Another campaign that we have put together is with SEPTA, so SEPTA has a program called iSEPTA Philly, and we incorporated that into iSEPTA Monco, so any SEPTA user who has their pass card can bring it to participating businesses, and we're always looking for more, so we'd love for some in Conshohocken to join as well. They can show that, and they get certain discounts, so a movie theater might offer a free popcorn or things like that, so that's yet another way that we're promoting, especially our smaller towns in Montgomery County that might run along some of those rail lines. So again, we encourage you to follow us on social media, interact with us, please let us know about what's happening in your town, especially new businesses or ones that maybe we should be working with that are tourism and hospitality-related. You'll see little bags on your chairs, thank you to Brittany for putting those out, they include some of our guides, and a couple little tchotchkes, and of course, the bag itself is a great lunch kit if you need one. I don't have a shoulder in there, I apologize. So now I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
You list hotels that are available, do you also do the bed and breakfasts?
We do, we don't have a lot in Montgomery County, actually, there are a few coming on board this year and into next year, so we will absolutely list those as well, because especially with some of the press, and social influencers and bloggers, they really want that boutique-type of hotel feel when they, you know, travel to a destination and when they're writing about something, so we love to offer those options as well.
We have one here.
In Conshohocken, yes, yep, and they are on our website.
Awesome.
Yeah. Any other questions that I can answer?
Why would someone choose to join the Valley Forge Tourism versus a Chamber of Commerce? Just to help educate me on the differences in promotion and...
Absolutely, so I can't necessarily speak to what a chamber does or does not offer, but I think the difference is that chambers are for lots of different types of businesses, whereas the Tourism Board is specifically most appropriate for tourism-related hospitality-type of businesses. And the other thing that we have that I think that a chamber does not have is a different type of budget, because we're funded by the hotel tax, we have different types of dollars to work with as far as promoting on TV or in digital ads, print ads, those types of things. We have a larger social following, I think, I don't know what the Conshohocken Business Association is like, or the chamber, but those types of things, I think, are just a different added benefit. I think businesses should absolutely work with their local chambers or business associations as well, I think there's different benefits there that they can get, you know, interacting with local entrepreneurs, but we also offer networking opportunities, you know, they can grow their business and learn from other similar types of businesses through our Tourism Board, I think.
Anyone else have any questions?
I just wanna say, we've been working with Visit Valley Forge for our Arts Festival, it's been a really great experience, and I can't remember if we used them for FunFest last year as an advertising tool, but, you know, there's certainly a lot more events we can work with you, so thank you for giving us all these new options.
No, it's my pleasure, and we post those events on our calendar, which then gets shared out every week on our social and through e-news and all those types of things, so we're happy to work with Conshohocken, and thank you so much for allowing me to speak to you tonight, and look forward to continuing to work together in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the 2020 Census Presentation for John Stammahavich, US Census Bureau, and I'm sorry if I...
That's okay, it was close.
Close?
Yeah, Stammahavich.
Ah, not that close, but...
Well, good evening, I'm John Stammahavich, I'm with the US Census Bureau, I'm a partnership specialist and a congressional liaison for the 2020 Census. What I'm, part of my job is to go out and speak to all the local municipalities throughout all of Montgomery County, and also in Philadelphia County, I'm the lead liaison for these, to the city of Philadelphia, along with a couple other census representatives, and part of my job now is to, I'm doing my Paul Revere, like the census is coming, the census is coming. I've been, I couldn't even tell you how many places I've visited and councils I've spoke to, I'd like to give a shout-out to Anita for helping me schedule this briefing to speak with you guys, I met with her at the, it was the Pennsylvania's...
PSAB.
PSAB Conference in Hershey, where we had a one-hour session, so, and I have, I could cover a lot, but I'm only gonna be here like, as quick as I can, because I know you guys have a lot of business. And also, part of my presentation is not only to you guys, but also to the general public, the 2020 Census affects us all. It's one, it's a decennial census, it happens once every 10 years, so the count that has happened in every decennial census is a count that sticks with the community for 10 years. So one, so some glowing facts real quick, is each of us here that's counted in a decennial census, right now, for the state of Pennsylvania, we represent $2,100 of guaranteed federal funding. So you multiply that by 10 years, that's $20,000 per count that we bring, that comes from the, that the federal government used to allocate federal funding programs for community services, you know, assistance programs, you name it, it's funneled from the federal government, then to the state, and then to the local communities and the boroughs, so that's why it's very, really, really important, that one, you know, I'm here to educate and create awareness, but also partner with the council to get an accurate count for the 2020 Census. So it's my Paul Revere, the census is coming, the census is coming, the countdown, we've got 237 days, the designated Census Day is April 1st, 2020. So why do we take the census? A lot of folks don't realize this, but this is, it's mandated by the US Constitution, Article 1, Section 2, that it mandates a head count every 10 years, everyone residing in the 50 states, Puerto Rico, and the island areas of the United States. So by law, the US Census Bureau must deliver a report of the population count to the President of the United States within nine months of Census Day, which the report will be submitted before December 31st, 2020. Now, how's Census data used? A lot of folks is like, well, what does it impact? I mean, how does it, how do I impact the census if I get counted? Well, there's a lot of things that are factored into the census data that's used, a lot of the stuff that the past speaker presented about businesses and, you know, tourism, like a lot of folks, when they're looking at businesses in Montgomery County, but also in the Conshohocken, they're looking at the demographics, and they're looking at census data, from real estate development to, you know, in terms of relocating their headquarters, I see Mary Sue Bergen is gonna be, so they use census data in deciding that they wanted to, you know, in terms of just locating here. So again, it just kind of touches us all, but the, one of the big things that happens every 10 years is that it conducts redistricting at the federal, state, and local level. It's apportionment seats in the US House of Representatives, which is huge, there's 435 seats in the House of Representatives, by law, they can't go any higher than 435. So what happens during this every 10 years is with the population shifts from state to state, it's an opportunity where some states will lose seats and other states will gain. So again, it's gonna be really important to, again, work with all the local communities to make sure that we've got the accurate count, so we have our, the proportion and the right House of Representatives sitting for Montgomery County, but also for the state of Pennsylvania. Now, one of the big factors too is that the count that's factored in, it distributes over $675 billion, as I said, coming from the federal government to the state, to the local communities, so this is annually. So again, whatever that's counted for at the 2020 Census, it's a number that sits for 10 years. It provides statistical data for grant applications, it plans for future community needs, programs and services, education, healthcare, transportation, social services, it forecasts future transportation needs, and so on. So why do people complete the survey? This is just a quick graph, just to see, just to show you, what is the most important reason to fill out the surveys? It helps determine funding for public services in any community, it's our civic duty, most folks don't realize, but we have three civic duties. Our three civic duties is to vote, do jury duty, and the census. So what's great about the census is, I'm a social studies wonk, so I, by trade, I'm a social studies teacher, and when I was a social studies teacher, right after college, I used to love this, like Constitution Day, Civic Day, you know, if you remember those Old Schoolhouse Rocks video, you know, with the cartoon, they just to show, you know, what voting does, this is a great, I call this as the Super Bowl for, this is the Super Bowl of Democracy, so it's an opportunity for the voiceless to have a voice by getting counted, and it's really, really important. Other reasons why, as you can see in this, in this graph, it contributes to a better future and funding for your communities. Now, the goal, we've got some new things and challenges, obviously, that I'm sure a lot of you are aware, with the 2020 Census, there's a lot of insecurity with government intrusion, finding information, which just, and then the Supreme Court, just a couple weeks ago, just made a decision that the citizens of question will be delayed, so it won't, they didn't get it in time to put it onto the census, so that question will not be on the 2020 Census. And there's a lot of other challenges too, and we're, for the first time ever, we're actually gonna be asking households and individuals to be responding online. In 2010, everything was so paper-heavy from the actual questionnaire, but also to all the jobs that we're gonna be hiring, we're all heavy-intensive with paper, so here, everything is gonna be automated, it's gonna be online, and so that's where we need to work with all the communities to just kind of, one, create awareness, but also educate folks that every household will have different opportunities to respond. The first response rate's gonna start in March of 2020, so there's a lot of awareness and educating that we're gonna be doing, working with you all, if there's upcoming events, you know, that we can have a Census Bureau table, a representative to pass out flyers, but also to help with recruiting, we're gonna be hiring thousands and thousands of folks within the Montgomery County, and what we're doing is, we're gonna be hiring a lot of enumerators, also known as census takers, they're the ones who are gonna be doing door-to-door, they're gonna be doing the address canvassing, which is actually gonna be starting in August, it's gonna run through October, which is a pre-operational phase to kind of make sure that the addresses that we have, working with the local areas with Luca, that the addresses are right, and as we do the mailing, that the questionnaire and in all the communications, we go into the right households. So if the last time I checked, Conshohocken's got about a population of about 8,000 residents, but then the households also is about 30, or it's about four, just under 4,000, so all 4,000 of those housing units will be getting all of the communications that we're planning on sending out. So as I mentioned before, what's new? We're maximizing the outreach by using both traditional and new media, the new media's all gonna be online, folks can respond online, we're also having a telephone service where folks that speak up to 12 non-English-speaking languages are able to call a hotline, that's gonna be, and also be going 24/7, so that's a, that's a new feature that, in terms of, you know, the response, we've also added additional languages that were, that are non-English-based. And then third, we're gonna be doing the traditional mail. So every household, starting in March, as I mentioned before, will get a postcard with a housing unit ID number, and with the URL for that housing, head of the housing household to respond to the questionnaire. There's gonna be multiple follow-ups, and what we tell folks too, because, you know, a lot of folks, they don't like people knocking on their doors, you know, if you don't wanna knock, respond. So you're gonna have a response time from March all the way up until the end of May, and then what happens is the next operation after, after that response is gonna be the non-response follow-up, and those are the folks where those census takers are gonna go ahead and go to those addresses to take the questionnaire, and they'll have all mobile devices to take that information as well. So as I kind of touched on earlier, so this just gives you an idea of the 2020 Census phases. Right now, we're in that educational phase, we started in 2018, 2019, then it goes on to the awareness phase, awareness phase in terms of just action is gonna be, gonna be started with a massive, massive national media campaign. So the federal government has just accepted a final contract and bid to work with a communication and ad agency that's gonna be doing radio, TV, bus ads, you name it, it's, we're gonna hear a lot of the 2020 Census. And then the motivation phase, that's the self-response phase, as I told you before, starts in March and goes to the end of May, the reminder phase is gonna be from May to the end of July 2020, and also, the end of July 2020 is gonna be the last chance to get the questionnaire responded. So operational timeline, as I mentioned, right now, we're starting, we're gonna be starting in local communities, with infield address canvassing, August 2019 to October 2019, then it goes to group quarters, so group quarters will be working with homeless shelters, universities, you know, apartment complexes, senior citizen housing complexes, et cetera, and going on to Census Days, April 1st, 2020, the internet self-response is from March 20 to July, and then the non-response follow-up, later in the end of the summer. So one of the things I want to share with you, and also to the, to the public, is the confidentiality and privacy, you know, there's a lot of hesitation and a lot of just insecurity about, you know, the information that we collect. So myself, as a Census Bureau and a federal employee, I take a lifetime oath where I can't disclose any individual information or business information, nor can the Census Bureau just share any individual information or business information. Our mission is here to count everyone only once, in the right place, that's it, we're here for the count. There's too many dollars that's needed, and there's too many programs and citizens and communities that are, you know, need those programs, so it's all about the statistical count. We take this very seriously, you know, as I did my oath as a federal employee, as I said, if I, if I break that oath, there's a $250,000 fine, and also up to a five-year in federal imprisonment. So the, in area census offices, so the whole state of Pennsylvania, we're gonna be opening up nine area census offices, also known as ACOs. So as you can see, Wave 1, which started in February 2019, we had an ACO office open in Harrisburg and in Cranberry, which township was out in Western PA, and Wave 2, which is kicking off this summer, we're gonna be doing one in Allentown, and also Norristown. Norristown, and what's interesting about these ACOs is that there, there's a lot of planning and a lot of strategy involved in these locations, so Norristown is gonna be a very, very busy ACO, there's a low response rate population within Norristown, and I'm working very closely with Congresswoman Madeline Dean's office, I'm gonna be speaking with her at a town hall coming up in September, currently working with the Montgomery County Planning Commission, we're gonna be enrolling a complete count committee, which is something I'll touch on real briefly, and then tomorrow, I've been working very closely with Norristown, the borough, in doing a complete count committee as well. Says, you could see, kind of just where the ACO offices will be throughout the state of PA. Now, one of the things I touched on earlier is, we're gonna be hiring a lot of folks, it's, it's, doing the 20, or doing any decennial census is a massive undertaking, and just for a cool, you know, fun fact, if you guys ever quiz-o, if there's asked, you know, what's the largest peacetime operation that the United States federal government partakes in, it's the decennial census. So throughout the country, when we're at full-peak operations, we're gonna be having over 3 million people on the ground and employed. It's all term and temporary-based, flexible and part-time, even my position is a term limited, but, you know, again, I, I'm a civics and social studies junkie, so when I had the opportunity to come and do this, and, you know, do my part in something big, you know, I'm really enjoying my job. So here's a quick snapshot of the jobs that are gonna be in... So here's a quick snapshot of the jobs that are going to be available. So the top positions, and again, all this information is in your packets, and in any additional follow-up communications, I'll work with Brittany afterwards. You know, my goal also too, just to make one note, is, not only, I hope this isn't the first time that I'm in front of you all, I hope to have some follow-up conversations and, you know, plan on how we can partner together for the 2020 census. So from the top, there's a lot, the position at the top are going to be focused in the Norstedown ACO. So they're full-time office jobs, ranges from the area census office manager all the way down to recruiting managers. The DAPs, which are the field canvassing jobs, this are also known as the census takers. They, they're all going to be work from home, but they're going to be based on field assignments of zip code and local community. So we're, that's why we're going to really rely on the local community members to work on the, in the field. You know, one of the things that we also need is, you know, we need trusted messengers, but we also need familiar faces. As my, if I'm walking around with a federal badge into some communities and I'm knocking on doors, you know, they're not going to open a door to me. So that's why we encourage folks to really kind of get involved, help their community to get an accurate count. These jobs also are very livable wages. As you could see, the pay rates start from $35 all the way down to $12. Excuse me. So very livable wage. Again, it's term-based, so it's, there's a job for everyone who's looking to do some maybe part-time work, or who, you know, has some time to be flexible and also just pick up some extra cash. So one of the things I mentioned to you before, as you could see where all the ACOs were strategically located, they're, they're based on the ACO maps and also by the low-response map, the LRS scores. So as you can see here in red, these are all of the areas that we're forecasting in having a low-response score. So a low-response score is, especially in the, in the dark, dark red, is that the anticipated response is up to 30% plus. So you can do the math. You know, if there's a demographic and a population in a certain census tract, and that, how many people are in that track? 30% of those folks are most likely not going to respond. So that's where we come in to partner with you guys, community, local, community leaders, nonprofits, faith-based organizations. So one, just to get the word out and to encourage everybody to participate in the census. So Montgomery County, this is a, this is the low-response score map throughout Montgomery County. As you could see, you know, it's going to be heavily, a lot of work's going to be done in Norstedown, but then also, as you could see, just a little bit in Conshohocken area, there's some pockets that are also going to have low-response scores. There's a lot of factors that are involved in that, but that's where we can work with, you know, leaders like yourself and community folks to kind of identify those pockets of populations. And just to, just to do two quick soundbites, the, the most challenged demographics that we have in getting an accurate count is folks who are 65 and years old and above, higher, but then also children under five. There's a whole lot of efforts that need to be do, done to promote the census to parents. We've got wonderful programs where we can work with schools, doing Constitution Day, but also statistics in schools, where we know that children nowadays are bearers of, they're messengers. You know, they go home, they tell their parents what they've learned about, but they're also translators. You know, for a lot of the households, that English isn't the first spoken language, but they're also tech-savvy. We, I've spoke to a PCA, which is the Philadelphia Corporation for Aging. A lot of their members are saying that their grandkids, you know, from the ages of like five to 10 years old, you know, are teaching them how to do social media, teaching them how to do, you know, email. So, you know, again, if there's, if we can get a household kind of effort to, you know, get the, to help folks to apply, you know, online, but also to, to respond to the questionnaire online, it's great. So one of the tools that we use, that very, that provides so much information demographically is the Response Outreach Area Mapper Map, also known as Rome. Now this, we could pinpoint, as I mentioned to you before, where those low-response score areas are. We can pinpoint those response rates per census tract. And then all this information is accumulated from the 2010 census, but also data that was pulled annually from the American Community Service, the American Community Survey, also known as the ACS. And so we're able to forecast these, these areas, and we also have the demographics, so we can really pinpoint, you know, those hard-to-count populations and demographics. So my last likes, I know I didn't want to go over 15 minutes, but there's so much information to share. One of the things that we would love to do with, with the council is to complete, is to form a complete count committee. So what's a complete count committee? It's a volunteer committee established by state and local governments, where community leaders work together to increase the awareness about the census and motivate residents in the community to respond. Committee members should be influencers in the following areas: government, media, workforce development, businesses, education, community organizations, faith-based organizations, and any organizations that are really focused on seniors, migrant workers, philanthropic, you name it. Anything that we can do to just to partner to get, to create awareness and educate. So the Complete Count Committee's goal is to bring together a cross-section of community members and leaders whose focus is on the 2020 census awareness, to increase participation in the 2020 census, especially in the low-response communities throughout the areas, but also focus to neighbor-to-neighbor programs. That's huge. You know, we need those folks to go out and be trusted ambassadors. The federal government can only do so much in terms of providing resources and staff, so that's why we need to encourage kind of everyone to come together to do this civic duty. And what we need too is also, we need to use the knowledge and expertise of the influencers like yourselves, trusted voices, to identify the areas, those communities that might not, that might be hesitant or concerned, and the challenges that they might face where they decide not to respond to the census. So that's why we need to kind of help us help you, you know, in terms of just an engagement. So this is just a quick snapshot of the municipal complete count committee. Most of the times, whether it's, however the boroughs are structured, there's a mayor or the mayor or council, you know, they point a designee who will be the chair, and then they invite all of the key stakeholders within the community to be a part of this complete count committee. There's just, there's no set model. It's based on, you know, identifying the right folks and getting a complete count committee. I'm more than happy to come back with a, with another representative to do a complete count committee briefing. We're doing these complete count committee briefings all throughout the county and within the city of Philadelphia, which would basically be, in terms of a progression, that would be just a more in-depth conversation of what a complete count committee is, what's involved, what are the strategies, how the federal government and myself, as a Census Bureau employee, can help and be an advisor and a resource. There's a lot of great things that complete count committees are currently doing throughout the state and throughout Montgomery County and the city of Philadelphia. So prepare now for the 2020 census. As I mentioned, we've got 200 and some days until the April 1st, 2020 census day. We got to prepare to participate, and what I can do is, and I'm more than happy to come back, speak to other community leaders, to talk about the importance, but also kind of do a rally for folks to get engaged, not only to potentially participate in the complete count committee, but also to work with any, any community efforts that are, that are going to be taking place over the next 235 days. So one last thing, if the complete count committee is, you know, isn't something that the borough would like to do, there's tons of things that the local governments can do to partner with us. For operational support, if you could, like, provide spaces where we can use for testing, onboarding, and also to, for folks to participate in the census. One of the things that, the challenges we have is a lot of households don't have internet. So we're working with libraries, we're working with schools, areas that actually have a, computers available where folks can actually apply for the census jobs, since all the applications are going to be online, but then also the encouragement of folks responding to the census online. Other ways that we can engage with the local community is provide lists of residential institutions. That's, those operations are already done with Luca, so the Census Bureau has been currently working with that, so that's, that's a huge engagement that we do with you guys. And also, just promote temporary jobs. I mean, we are going to be doing a massive hiring. So folks who, if there's just, can help to spread the word to folks who'd be interested in working the census, you know, we'll have a lot of jobs available. Promotional support, any social media, websites, you know, anything, we've got content that's already created, so it's, it's, nothing has to be recreated. A lot of stuff's going to be there, you know, available for, to do any promotion, whether it be social media, website, and then actually, you know, having any materials at community events as well. So I know I threw a ton of information at you, I tried to jam it in, but I'm available here for, if you guys have any quick questions.
No, I would say, thank you. It was very informative. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the Planning Commission Report with Stacy Ellam, Chair of the Planning Commission. Good evening, Stacy.
Good evening, members of council. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity, on behalf of the Planning Commission, to come and kind of give you a, just a quick update on what's been going on with the Planning Commission. We've had three meetings so far this year. The first one being in March, where we addressed 144 West 9th Avenue, which I believe has already come before council. We had a meeting on May 9th in regards to 203 East 12th Avenue and 1023 Fayette Street. Again, I believe both of those have already come to council. And the most recent meeting, June 13th, which was regarding 337 West 6th Avenue and a minor change for the Keystone Sora property, which is in regards to elevator placement, because they got a tenant for the hotel, they had to change a couple of things. I sent a report to you guys, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have on anything. We, for those of you who don't know, we kind of address waivers and things that businesses and housing come to us for, kind of go over with a fine-tooth comb, base a lot of our decisions on the comprehensive plan, which was put together, and then we submit our recommendations to council for their decisions and approval. We address things like parking and stormwater and trees, and how it's going to impact the neighborhood as a whole, or even the town as a whole. So that's part of what the job that we do. And we'd love to have people at the meetings, nobody comes to our meetings, and we would love to have people come to our meetings sometimes, so. If anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. If not, I'll see you in six months.
Stacy, are the board members having any difficulties with anything that would need to be addressed from an ordinance or resolution perspective?
I don't think so. We have our wonderful borough employees on hand for the meetings. Stephanie Zissel-Michels here, Brittany, as well as Karen when we need her. And they're pretty skilled in what we need to know, and they're very good resources for us. It would never hurt to have a, a sit-down and kind of go over the more commonly-used ordinances or things that maybe you guys are planning on changing in the future, so maybe we don't hit them as hard in our questioning going forward.
And then, is the comprehensive plan actually being pulled out and used as a tool during decision?
It is. It comes up, it comes up a lot. It comes up in regards to the trees, it comes up in regards to when contractors are looking to demolish twins or single-family houses, and we constantly ask them, is there room for single-family homes? Because we know that's something that we're trying to put back into town. The shelter came up at 1023 Fayette Street for the buses and the size of the space there, and it was debated pretty heavily, and we ultimately left that decision in your hands. So it is being used in the meetings, correct? Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for Stacy? Stacy, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is interviews for boards and commissions. Celia King.
President, we actually, Celia King had to reschedule last minute, so tonight is just Mark.
We're just going to invite Mark up.
Yeah.
He is interviewing for the Board of Code Appeals, and if you could share your last name with us, we would appreciate that.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mark Bonavita Cola.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Thank you for coming in, Mark. So you're interviewing for the Board of Code of Appeals, and I believe at this time, we don't have anyone, do we?
So currently, right now, the Board of Code Appeals, it's made up of three members, but all positions are vacant. So Mark would be applying for one of those positions, and it would be a three-year term.
So first of all, thank you very much for taking the interest in, in this board. We really appreciate that.
No problem at all. I'm happy to do it. I saw that there were those three vacancies, which was, led to my making an inquiry and ultimately applying, so.
Right. And I did your, did read your resume, and you are very well-qualified for the position, so that's great also. Personally, is there anything you can add on why, what you could add? Well, you can add everything right now, but...
I think we've all heard a lot tonight, but I can answer any questions, but just basically, I just have a desire to get into the civic, get, you know, my civic duty fulfilled, and this was actually something that my late father did when he was around my age, back in Marple Township. This is years ago, so it's just something I've always wanted to do, and this was a great opportunity to do it, and hopefully I'm acceptable.
We appreciate that. Does anyone have any questions for Mark?
I just wondered, do you have any experience working with contractors?
Quite a bit of experience, actually. I am an attorney that represents principally contractors in commercial and residential construction.
But I was thinking of smaller contractors, not...
We represent two or three people. Honestly, it could be as the smallest office you can imagine, and we're very diverse.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else have any questions? Okay. Thank you very much, Mark.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Let's check out.
The first item under Manager Matters is to consider approving Resolution 201918, the fair housing resolution. Because the borough receives federal funds through the CDBT and the home programs, it's, we're obligated to affirm our support of fair housing. One of the stipulations is that you approve a resolution stating such. So in front of you is the resolution itself, and if you're so inclined, I would need a motion.
I'll make that motion to approve.
I'll second it.
On favor? Aye. Are opposed? Motion carries?
The next item on the agenda is to consider approving Resolution 201919, which establishes a temporary traffic restrictions on West 2nd Avenue. We've actually had engineering evaluation done of the issue at the bottom of 2nd Avenue, the reasoning for why it was temporarily restricted. We need one further, we think, one further extension of that temporary restriction in order to actually complete the work. So we are asking for you to consider the extension, which would take it to November of 2019.
I'll make that motion.
Aye. On favor?
Aye.
Are opposed? Motion carries?
The next item is to consider authorizing advertisement of an RFP for towing services. This is not for a vote this evening, it is for discussion. There is a draft in front of you this evening. This draft was formulated between myself, Brittany, the Chief of Police, and the Director of Public Services, our Executive Director of Operations. Our legal team needs to review it still, but I wanted to first put it, bring it to your attention, so you had time to review it over the next two weeks, and ensure that all the stipulations that you want are in there. I will just draw your attention to timeline. So what we're really potentially considering is that the RFP would be, the authorization to advertise would be at the end of August. We would look to have an end-of-September due date for the proposals to come in. We would then evaluate the proposals that are received, and we would conduct interviews, potentially in October. And then, the selection of the actual entity would be, to be determined. So we can determine, we'll be right in the middle of budget season as well, so we kind of need to see what responses we get from the RFP to determine what fits into our overall plan.
Okay.
Is there anything in particular that you are looking to include in the RFP at this point that you'd like us to add? Or do you, would you like the next two weeks to really review this, digest it, and then send me any thoughts? And then we'll include those revisions and suggestions for consideration for the next meeting.
Yeah, I think that will take the two weeks.
Okay. So this is actually a compilation of multiple municipalities, kind of a cross-study, as well as our current contract that's in place.
I did read it, it's pretty thorough, so.
And this keeps us in line with all of our outsourcing of services, where we're looking at all of the contracts of partnerships with...
Yep, it's just our normal procedure that you've asked administration to follow.
Okay.
Okay, so that will be back in front of you. If you have any suggestions or revisions, let me know, and I will include them in the draft for your consideration. The last item under Manager Matters is to consider authorizing the tuition reimbursement for Officer Sean Gregory. The request is in front of you, and it was in your meeting materials. This is a budgeted item per the collective bargaining agreement.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Are opposed? Motion carries?
I have no further comments. What...
So summertime is one of the most needy times for our food pantry, Colonial Neighborhood Council. We have a lot of students on summer break, so they're not getting meals at school, and they're doubling their demand for food at home. We also lose Colonial School District and all the amazing food drives that they do throughout the year. So summertime is actually one of the most critical times for the food pantry. So for, I think, the third summer in a row now, the Rotary Club is running a drive this summer. So there are bins all over the borough, about ten places. Sarah and I went to Guppy's last night and we walked out with armfuls of bags of cans and food and peanut butter. So they are being used, they are being utilized. So if you would get the word out, we have one at the community center. And if you look at the sheet, you'll see the items that are most critically needed. But so far, it's been great. I was in CNC today and it looked like the shelves were pretty full. So it won't stay that way for long, but it was great.
It took a little bit to get them.
Yeah. So that's going on. And then I had the opportunity last night to go to National Night Out in King of Prussia. And our Officer Valone was representing our police department. And as you can see, as usual, his booth is usually the most popular. So he's giving out little junior police badges and pencils and information about identity theft and just all around being his very informative and charming self. So Sarah and I checked it out. We had a really good time. It was great to see dozens of other emergency services all in one place and a lot of little kids getting face time with police officers and emergency services and fire departments. So thank you, Chief, for allowing that to continue. And that's it.
Yeah, I'd like to just comment on the, I did the walkthrough with the trash and steam plant with Karen and the mayor. And it was quite educational, interesting. And my opinion is, and I think my daughter-in-law is satisfied too because she was very involved with the situation that, I might even have her tour down there. She might even do a tour. But I feel the plant is safe. I mean, they explained to us that the landfills, if there's a landfill in this town, which we don't have one, the landfills are the worst, and I've been around landfills. They're terrible. They're the worst things, toxic, all kinds of animals, rats, pigeons. But we have a very safe, everything goes into the machines, it gets funneled out. And it's quite interesting. It's quite interesting. So myself, as a council person, I'm satisfied with what I saw down there.
Thank you, Bob.
You're welcome.
I have to agree with them. I went with Colleen and we did tour. It's a little smelly, but not too bad. But it was worth seeing and to have them actually break down how everything works within that plant was very helpful. And they are so incredibly regulated that, it's not funny. I mean, it was, there's so much stuff that they have, they are required to report on. So it was very informative.
Thank you, Mia. Tina?
I just have an update with the CRC, the Rowing Center, and where things stand. So we have a group that is looking to bring Plymouth Whitmarsh students and put together a community rowing program, not necessarily a school program, because the school can't support another venue of activity. So this is a private group that would be PW High School students. Right now, they're working on putting together a parent organization. The idea of making this program sustainable is that parent organization would have to do their own fundraising and really come up with a basis of about a hundred thousand dollars to get them started. But we didn't want that to stop the momentum. So the students that would be interested in the program will join the fall rowing, Learn to Row programming. And they'll do that at some discounted pricing that the CRC has offers when groups come in to do that. So they'll do that and then they'll continue to raise funds and plan for also doing this spring Learn to Row program with the idea that hopefully they can get this group together and actually start competition then in the summer. And then in the meantime, we have to work with the CRC. We still don't necessarily have a commitment from the CRC. So Stephanie, myself, and Tom Flynn, who are the representatives for Conshohocken on the CRC board, are going to meet and talk about how we can present and support this group using the Conshohocken Rowing Center as one of the assets for our community. So I just want all of your feedback that we still want to do that and that we are representing Conshohocken as a whole in what it is that we're going to present to them.
I think it's a great idea. I think we need to do it. I think it's a great facility down there and they have the fundraising room. They have a great room on top that they could use for fundraising. It's a nice place to have a cocktail party or whatever. And it's about time we get something going there.
Okay, great.
I mean, that's great.
So we're going to work to talk about sending a list of what the benefits and the points that align with their mission and vision for that program from us. So that's where we are with that.
Thank you, Tina.
You're welcome.
Jane. Lastly, we had a Friends of Country Parks meeting and we are getting closer to kicking off our fundraising efforts for all of the Conshohocken parks. For those of you that are not familiar, we formed a nonprofit entity separate from Borough Council. It's run by citizens. And that would help us raise funds for individual parks. So if you have an affinity and a love for Suckliff Park and someone wants to donate money for a project there, it would be designated for wherever you donate the money. So that's the one meeting. And then next week, we will be having a Marywood Park Commissioners Meeting. And that, again, will work with the Friends of Country Parks to work on the plans for the community center and also the Marywood Park House.
We need a zip line at Suckliff.
You know, I was just.
Well, that's, there you go, Bob. That's a great idea. I think we've looked into that already.
Thank you, Jane. Mike?
Yeah, I've been talking with Ray about these weeds and grass in Conshohocken, but he said he's getting on it and I take it as word for it because it's getting outrageous. Thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
So we have our next, Bob and I sit on the Parking Task Force Committee. We have our next meeting scheduled for August twenty-eighth. At that point, we're expecting to receive an update from the parking study that will be presented by our engineer, Brian Keveney. And we'll also be further in conversations that we're having with a borough-wide parking study. And this is something that we're collaborating with Temple University. So we'll be getting an update, some discussion around that, as well as we've been collectively as a group looking for the top ten issues throughout the borough. And that will be shared at that time as well.
Thank you, Karen. Chief Metz?
There's an addition to the borough family. Juliana Okowski was born August first. For those who don't know, she's our Police Administrator Assistant. And everyone's doing well and we're all getting appreciation for Kelly.
I'm sure you are.
I say we, I mean may.
Good admission, George. Anyone else have any, anything? Do we have anyone for public comment? Could you come up to the podium and state your name and address, please?
Yes, good evening, everyone. How are you?
Good, how are you?
I tend to come once a month. And back in May, I had a question about crosswalks. Mr. Sokolowski provided some information. And I'm still a little bit confused as to, not confused, but uncertain why we couldn't do this one particular crosswalk. And since the Chief of Police is here, he might be able to help answer some of the questions. I believe, I was told, I believe, I was told, a couple of reasons were you need to have ramps, handicap accessible ramps. And the cost was forty-five hundred dollars to do each ramp, not the three or four hundred dollars I thought. And there was one other reason, oh, so the borough wouldn't be held viable. So you don't want to put crosswalks where they're not supposed to be. But just this past week, they've been repainted. Some of the crosswalks have been repainted, specifically down by the train station. That's what I'm talking about. And on the inbound side of the train station, there's two crosswalks. One has the ramp and the other one is just curb to curb. So my question is, if the one side of the train station, Mr. Sokolowski, is curb to curb, why can't we put a crosswalk on the other side of the train station where it also would be curb to curb? So that's my question. If the one side does have a crosswalk from the train station steps across the street to where they go upstairs, and that's curb to curb, why can't we have a crosswalk on the other side of the train station where seven times a day?
Mr. Zale, maybe we should put that under, can you put that under the camera?
Oh, sure.
Seven times a day, three in the morning, ready afternoon, you can do that. People are taking Russian roulette, crossing from here to here to go to this building, which is, I think, eight and to Seven Tower Plaza. Seven times a day, the people are crossing and there's different pictures there you can show. Cars are moving, not stopping. People are trying to get across. I took it from two different angles at two different times. Cars are coming, people are crossing, and there's no crosswalk because in the state of Pennsylvania, there is a law that vehicles must stop when the pedestrians are in the crosswalk. And I think Mr. Sokolowski was correct in telling me you don't want to jeopardize suits or lawsuits if something happens. But yet, in the first, in this picture here, there is a crosswalk curb to curb. So why couldn't we do that on the other side? That's the only question I have. I mean, it's forty-five hundred each side, but you already have it on the one side. Why not have it on the other side? And with the police chief here, it's, I've talked to a couple of officers who happen to be down there and they said they haven't had any reports in the last number of years of anybody getting hit. It's just a, like, right there, from that curb to that curb. That's all I'm asking. I mean, is it possible to help the people cross at rush hour in the morning and coming home? I don't, I just cross when I go for my walks twice a day.
Is there a question in there for me?
I mean, is there a police liability that we can't do it?
Well, listen, I'll say, I'll say again what I told you before. And this crosswalk here, under the bridge, kind of illustrates it. There is a pedestrian crosswalk.
Right.
For the railroad tracks and the street. It's the bridge. And that's what this is directing people to do. The people, as you say, are committing, are playing Russian roulette seven days a week.
Five days.
Or five times a week or five times a day or whatever.
Right.
They're choosing to do that themselves. There is an alternative. They're choosing to walk across the tracks and walk catty corner to, you know, catty corner on the corner. I agree with you. It's not, it's not a great setup right there to walk. People do it all the time. There is an alternative. It exists. They don't use it because they have to walk up steps.
They have to walk up, across and.
They want to make it the path of least resistance, I would imagine, so.
Right. But isn't there a way we could help accommodate that? I mean, if the reason why, if I thought I was told correctly that you don't want to do a crosswalk, crosswalk curb to curb, you're already doing one curb to curb and it was just repainted this week. So the borough knows about it. Why not do it from Septa over to the one-seven Tower Bridge? I mean, it, somebody's going to, if somebody gets hit, they're going to sue you.
Well, I don't know. I don't know if they will or not. I mean, you know.
Yeah, that's not your.
Well, they won't sue you. They'll sue the guy who hits him or the lady who hits him.
Probably won't be the last time either, but, you know, like, I don't know, I don't know what to tell you. We don't have a problem with cars running into people down there. The biggest problem we've had right there at that intersection is.
Is the cars going on the tracks. Yeah, the cars.
They're off the railroad tracks and you don't get hit by a train.
Right. It's just.
There's an alternative to that. You know, that's what I'm saying. That's in there for a reason. You know, if there were no alternatives down there, would we be liable? Probably a lot more liable than we are right now if people had no choice but to do what they're doing right there and take that, and take that risk.
I watch that every day. Nobody climbs the steps. Nobody. Only three trains coming out and the four trains going in at rush hour. Not one climbs up, walks over and climbs down. They all do this. I mean, and that's fifty, seventy people each train. So how are you going to relearn those people not to do that?
I don't know, I don't know how to answer your question. I mean, there's, there's an alternative for people who cross the tracks there safely and that's in place.
Well, what's the prohibition?
I suggest that that's what they do. But they're, they're, they're deciding to, you know.
Take their life in the hands.
To go where, the way they're going.
So if we put off, up the crosswalk, that encourages them to cross the tracks, which is what we don't want. Is that, am I getting the correct?
Well, that's another way of looking at it.
That's what I'm hearing. That's why I'm asking.
It, it, it could be. It didn't occur to me in this conversation, but yeah. And I wrote it up.
That's what you said.
But nobody's using it. Nobody's calling up. Everybody's crossing.
But I guess it's similar to the people that choose not to cross at a traffic light on Fayette Street. They look both ways and they run. We can't prevent people from being foolish. That's their choice.
Do we, and what is our signage like down there for the pedestrians to use the stairway and not cross on the tracks? Do we, is that, that's not even ours, is it?
Yeah, it's not ours. We don't own the railroad tracks.
There's none that I'm aware of. I mean, they're directing people to use that.
Maybe that's what we need to look into.
But can we put signs up? Would that be on Septa?
They press in the middle of a block on Fayette.
Right. That's what it reminds me of.
Yeah, I think that if we're talking about it on the spot right now about deliberating.
Yeah, and it's something we're going to have to do a study on, really.
No, I think it's a valid point to bring up. I mean, if there's a need, if you're saying that you're personally witnessing this large amount of foot traffic taking risks, then, and if we don't think that it's in their best interest to cross there, then our response back at this point would be then we need to put, if it's our responsibility, which we'll look into, clear signage that's directing them towards the path that protects them. But yeah, it's definitely something that we'll look into. I mean, I think it's.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
And on a very positive note, since last month when I was here and I said that the sign for the free parking, now it's a big sign. It's in white.
I looked at that.
So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
A little sign became a big sign. So thank you very much for.
Thank you.
So I have to tell you, I didn't know these stairs were there.
You're kidding.
So when I park down here, the only way I can figure out how to get there is to walk across the tracks.
That's what masking is.
So that may be the solution is sign it. Because I never knew that these were here where I could have a safer route.
Yeah, that's what I think if I'm listening to Mr. Zale.
Right. That's why I asked the question. I assumed there was no sign. Well, it's not going to hurt.
I don't know that it will, but I never knew the stairs were there.
Okay, anyone else for public comment?
Yes, sir.
Could you come up? It's I, you need to come up and state your name and address for us, please. Thank you.
Who are you?
Ty Burkowski, three twenty, West Twelfth Avenue. I'm not sure where I fall on the agenda, but I attended last month's sewer authority meeting and was instructed to come before council to get a ruling on the alleyway utility right away. So I have some information I'd like to share with everyone to try to see where we're going with this thing. Because right now, my, our job at East Seventh is going to come to a standstill.
I think you can give us the information. I don't think it's anything we could rule on this evening, but we can, we can get it at least started.
Yeah, I can, I can, I'll share with you what I have.
Okay.
Would that be a legal? Is that legal? We can't.
Just so the rest of council understands this.
Just, just so the rest of council understands this, there's an alleyway that his property, which is a hail pump.
Okay.
Okay, you know how the alley works. Somebody on one side owns part of it and somebody on the other. For Ty to connect to the sewer pipes, which are on the other opposite side of his property, he's been trying to get an easement for this so that he can tap into that sewer line, or he's gonna have to put a whole new one in, in order to get connected. So that's what we're up against. Well, he is, and I'm not. Sorry.
So what we did, I've been after this for over two years now. So what's going on is, the authority is telling me that the, their, their infrastructure is on public property. And then we discovered that ordinance where the borough council, back, way back in nineteen thirty-seven, they had the foresight to realize that when they installed this infrastructure, they needed right-of-ways. So they created that, and there's an ordinance for that. I was told that in the mid-seventies, Borough gave back the alleyways to the residents, which extinguished that right-of-way. Now, the right-of-way is for EMT, you can't build a shed on it, it's for Pico, it's for Aqua, it's Verizon. What they're saying is, if the sewer main is off-center of the alley and falls on the neighbor's side, it's actually their sewer main. It's on their property. So if you were to repair it or do any work, you need an easement agreement. So what they want me to do, and what they've instructed us to do in the past is, they want me to go down Eighth Avenue and knock on all the resident stores, introduce myself, and then have them sign a grant of easement dedication, which then has to get a value put on it. I then have to have the engineer get a legal description done, record it at the courthouse, come back. If I get one refusal, I, I can't, so right now, we can't, we can't move forward. We're planning on having an open house next month. Units are, will be done, residents are moving in.
How has the response been from the property owners so far?
I'm not going there. I'm not gonna do that.
So you have to try.
I'm not gonna do it. Because if I can.
No, no, believe me, Ty, you know, I get easements, easements for my clients for almost every single project, so I'm very, very familiar.
It, it's, it's in there. If, if council tells me, how, how is the alley not used for utility right-of-way? Let, let's go, let's go a couple different scenarios here. How, what legal right does the sewer authority have to come on private property and dig up someone's yard or alleyway?
They don't. They have to get an easement. They have to go to the public.
Mister Jones's sewer line breaks, and he's upstream. What happens downstream if he doesn't want to give you the right to come on his property? What, if there's an incident on the property?
No, no, I know, but that's why I'm saying you don't get an easement.
So if a resident's lateral breaks by the main, he can be down for four or five months. And would if that neighbor refuses him that legal right-of-way, what does he do?
You, he has an easement.
Who has an easement?
You, you with a full in easement, that gives you the, well, actually, the authority over easement, that gives them the right to go into the ground and fix that one. That's the whole point of it.
Where is their easement?
That's, that's what that is.
I know. It covers the whole alley. That easement covers.
That's Ty's question, Mike.
No, 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 that, I've seen that provision in the orders. It does not do what you think it does.
What does it do then? How, how am I connecting into the sewers in any alley?
How do you do it?
Yeah.
Put it on your side, which you have a right to.
So when, when I, and I don't know if Karen can calculate, can clear this up. If I, when I did my calculations for my area coverage on the subdivision, I wasn't allowed to use the alley in that calculation, I believe, because it's considered a right-of-way.
You're right. It is considered a right-of-way between you and all of the neighbors. That's correct.
But not a utility right-of-way?
No. Well, I shouldn't say, I shouldn't say not a utility right-of-way.
I, I think if, if council reads that, maybe they'll, they'll interpret it a little different.
They will not. It is, it is extraordinarily clear with that provision.
How did Schaefer Builders do it?
How did anyone do it?
I know, but they built the houses down their fault.
How does?
Yeah, the houses that you're building next to.
Yeah, Schaefer Builders did it.
I couldn't tell you. The guys across the alleyway from you the way they did it was they put it on their side, which now is.
That's right. I forgot about that.
So if you ask those, how many houses you gotta go to, maybe fifty?
Five.
They prob, half of them probably don't even know that that's their prop, that they own empty alley.
How may, how?
I mean, it doesn't mean that anything.
You're saying the sewer authority does not own that main. The residents.
The residents, yeah, because.
Own the main.
It's their property.
It depends on sewer authority an easement for that main, you know, for the property.
They can get, they can get easement. We just got a whole slew of, from Caldwell.
Why don't you go to Remington? They were the ones that shaved everything.
I don't wanna, why am I, if, how is the sewer authority's infrastructure on private property? How's that even possible?
That's just the way it was built eighteen years ago.
And if I don't get granted an easement?
This happens, this happens everywhere. It happens with.
I've never seen it happen.
Yeah, every single project that knocked into my lives, I've had it. Every single, I mean.
In an alley, in an alley, in an alleyway, that man, so someone owns, so some resident owns that manhole.
Yes.
So if the authority comes on there and Vinnie or someone's digging up that, and there's a, there's an accident, God forbid, or the machine falls over, that resident's liable because he's on their property digging up the manhole.
No, 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 the easement provides for.
So there is an easement.
No.
No, we have to get it. We have to go out and get one.
So they have, the residents have an easement. Well, the authority has the easement for that, recorded.
That, that the, whoever is putting the laterals against God, that is the way it works.
So there's an easement for that entire main.
No, Ty, it's the easement that you handed up.
I know, I understand that. So why can't I tie into it if the borough, if the authority has that?
My point is that that is why the requirement, it is, so that you don't have the exact issue that you raised, which is, which is what's in.
Doesn't make any sense. Your, all the pipe work is, say, a foot off the center of the alley. That belongs to the residents, where there is an easement that the authority has to keep it there.
There should be an easement that the authority.
So why can't I use their easement?
Does the authority have an easement for this main?
That's what I just asked.
He has been.
I said it's private property, and I need to come before.
I, I don't think we do have an easement for their.
You need to ask that question and get it in writing, a yes or a no answer on that, from the sewer authority, if they have the easement.
He was told we do not have an easement.
I did ask that. I said, do you have an easement for your infrastructure? Is there an easement that covers this main? Who, how does it get repaired? How do other residents, if, tap into that? If the guy across the alleyway from me, okay, on my side of the alley, if his lateral breaks near the main, how does he come in there and repair that? Does he have to go through this, get an easement?
Yes.
So he could be without, he could be without sewers for three, four months.
But they're, they're not normally. If it's, if it's that bad, if it's.
It's been two years from me. So let's drink this in for one minute. If the sewer ma, main is a little off-center, it becomes the residents on that side, on the Eighth Avenue side, it becomes their sewer main. But there's already connections, say, from thirty years ago into that main. I'm on this side, the wrong side, and my lateral breaks at the main, and I need to get there to fix it. I can't do that. It's private property. How would I do that? I have to then go and get this document, grant of easement. I'm supposed to go to the residents with this thing, go all through this, have them sign off on it, record it at, at courthouse, right? And let them know that, now I'm part owner of their property too.
So the sewer authority gave you that paper?
Absolutely. And I've been draining my escrow account trying to get this resolved, because every time I go to the authority or ask a question, like, how am I tapping? They charge me.
But, so Ty, I guess the problem is if you're trying to get it resolved, you're also refusing to even try to.
Because isn't that, does, isn't this a greater problem for the borough?
It, it, it is a greater problem, but, but if it's been a problem in the past, we shouldn't allow it to continue to occur in future. So should they have an easement? Absolutely.
No, no, you think that, so you think one at a time is the way to handle this, rather than the, rather than the council address the problem like everyone else does and say, the alley is a right-of-way for utilities and the benefit of the public.
We don't agree.
The council does not.
No.
What does, what does that say? There's a lot of brave people in council.
Did Phil, the house in this town, what, and did what he has to do?
No, no, I don't, I don't think so, but that was a mistake. That is what should have occurred for the last forty years.
So now they're taking it out on him and making him do it?
The, the alternative is to even require them to get eas, to get easements over all of their mains. All of the ratepayers are gonna pay for that. So the question is, do you have the developer that's developing property pay for it, or do you have all the ratepayers?
As the sewer authority said, that's the fact.
What's that?
Literally, that, cut and dry.
Say that again, I didn't hear it first.
That you either are the developer paying for the easement, or it's the sewer authority paying for the easement that they should have had, and then the ratepayers have to pay for the cost of that.
Yeah, they said that the authority would have to incur the cost, and I, and I'm saying, you're just looking at me as eight tie-ins. I'm looking over the borough, the residents and everyone. This, this is a, a problem for me, but it's a larger problem for all the residents. They own those pains. They own that infrastructure. What if it breaks and erodes their property and the shed falls in? It's, it, that document calls out every single alleyway in there, if you read through it. It even calls out the one I have in question. I think it's on page twenty-eight. Page twenty-eight, number twenty, alley between Seventh and Eighth Avenue. It calls it out that it's a sewer right-of-way. They, they wrote this whole thing before they put the infrastructure in, so they have the authority to go on the properties and repair it for the health and benefit of the borough. This is, this is not just Ty's problem. Any resident that needs to go on there, or any accidents that happened on there, that resident is responsible. Now, does he have to increase his homeowner's insurance because he now has a sewer main on his property?
Ty, I think the problem is that you're proving the point.
Yep.
That you need an easement.
That I need an easement? No, I'm proving that the authority needs an easement.
I don't think you're suggesting that you want the ratepayers to pay for your.
It exists already. The document exists. Who made the document?
I guess that's my question. If it's in writing here, can we?
It's an ordinance.
Right.
Sure, we can, we can review it, but I'm, I'm telling you, even without seeing it, you have absolutely no right to know.
Even though it says it in paper?
Doesn't matter what it says.
Ty, you should go to the sewer authority tomorrow and say, how did Schaefer Builders build them houses?
I've been over this a few times.
So Ty, I'm gonna say, you're, you're presenting us with a, a problem that
Takes more time than.
is gonna take us a lot of time to even look through. It's not something that we're gonna ever be able to give you an answer to this evening.
I understand.
So, but the point of it is, we can't fix your problem right now. And, and I understand that you're gonna say it's a borough problem, but right now, it's your problem.
Well, I don't think, I mean, I've talked to Ty about this multiple times. I don't think Ty is saying it's a borough problem. I think he's trying to make it very clear that there's an issue with the sewer authority.
Right, which I understand. Okay. And we do, we all understand.
Back logically. Everybody's pretty bright one. Does any of this make any sense to you? We're gonna build an infrastructure on somebody else's property, and now we're gonna ask, one by one, if there's a problem, you go to the courthouse, you hire an engineer, you hire an attorney, you get a legal description, you then record it, you put a value on that property. I'm gonna give you another example. If I go to residents one through ten, and one of them says, oh, you, you need to get on my property, you want an easement, because there's a dollar value to an easement, and they say, Ty, give us five hundred dollars.
That's, that's cheap.
Now they all get together. You know what? We got this guy over the battle. Let's get five thousand dollars. So then I go on social media and say, anybody that has a main on their property and they need a legal, this is what Ty paid.
I know, but I'm, I'm telling you that, that that is what, that is what the developers, that, that's what people do, unfortunately.
Extort.
But that, that is what.
Extort.
So.
I think this is fixing the problem for the borough.
You getting an easement over your laterals?
Yes, that is.
Borough fixes my problem.
Yeah, yes.
It fixes any resident's problem.
It'll fix your future, your future resident's problem if something goes wrong with their lateral.
So when I get denied, like, I'm tearing up the alley and repaving it, when I'm allowed to go on that guy's property to do so. Because it's in my developer's agreement. I'm going on their property, ripping the alley out, repaving it, widening it. I can do that.
Absolutely. You can, one hundred percent, because you have, because you have the right to access over that alley. You, there's no doubt that you.
No, I'm going on their private property.
You can, you are.
To rip it up.
You are absolutely entitled to do that. I think you should talk to your, to, I think your attorney is George.
Yeah, it's been back and forth. I'm almost out of money. You guys been playing legal ping pong with this thing.
I, I.
You, you, you keep saying that.
It's right here. And, and I've been getting billed to the wrong project too. I got seven oh one Jones Street, correct? And then I got seven, as you can see, how they're labeled.
These bills are coming from the sewer authority.
Correct.
Yeah.
So you can see, seven twenty-fourth Avenue, that's phase two, that's the larger job. I deposit ten thousand dollars in there for the authority to review whether I could connect. I now have fifty-eight hundred dollars left. So if you go over here, all I asked for on June seventh, I said, Lauren, how do you want me, how do you want this face in somebody's house asking to sign this legal document? Can you generate a letter for me, okay, explaining to the residents, when I sit to them, with them, hey, Ty needs this easement because it's on your property. Somebody generated it. So I get charged for that. Never got the letter, but I continue. I get fees for it. Review, Tiber Kowski and Clark easement.
And who is this? This is Lauren Gallagher from Michael Clark's office?
Yep.
Okay.
Now, that's, was billed to seven twenty. They're taking money out of that account, nothing to do with the problem I'm having. Here's seven oh one Jones Street. We started out with five thousand. We got eighteen hundred dollars left.
What has the sewer authority's explanation been regarding, even regarding their billing issues?
I pay, I get a double hit. So if I go to George Azarowski and ask him and say, George, how could this be? I can't connect into the sewer. He then contacts Clark. George bills me. Clark bills me for talking to George. Everybody's billing me. I finally go down to, how many times, authority meeting, everyone sits there and say, this is a council problem. You need to go, I said, so we're perfectly clear, when I left the meeting, so we're perfectly clear. This is council's problem. Absolutely.
So can I just summarize for just a second?
Right.
So we, you are presenting us, as the borough, an issue that you've been dealing with, with the sewer authority for months now.
Over two years.
Okay, years. And they now are telling you that because they can't rectify it, they're now bringing it, it's now our problem.
Correct. We will do whatever council tells us to do.
Okay. So it sounds to me that the only option we have in this scenario, since you've indicated that you will not go out and get the easements yourself, is that you need the borough to now insert in sewer authority business to try to get to the bottom of it?
Correct. I was instructed to do that.
Okay.
But to be clear, if someone gener, I am not knocking on someone's door and showing them this legal document and trying in my own words to explain to them that they have a liability in their backyard, okay?
Is all of your business with the sewer authority like this?
It's, 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 all right, do it this way. We, we are having an open house. Probably by the end of August, mid-September, lights are on, water's running, we're gonna be landscaped. Can't plug into the sewer, can't build the garages, can't do the alleyway. Now, I submitted in two thousand, July sixth, two thousand eighteen. Borough, planning, everybody's been great, we're moving along. I, I just, all I'm doing is spending money down the authority. I can't get an answer.
Ty, do you build other, in other communities?
You do.
Do you?
Do you, does your company build in other communities?
We have.
And do you have the same interactions with other sewer authorities?
I go to Plymouth Township, you pull a street. I go to Plymouth Township, you pull a street opening permit and a plumbing permit, maybe $200. Everybody uses the same saddle. It's, just wraps around the main and there you go. You're done. By the time all this engineering's done, say I spend $5,000 on legal reviews and I get a registered plumber, takes them about 20 minutes to plug into the sewer. It's a gravity-fed system. It's a four-inch pipe into an eight-inch pipe. They've manufactured the same saddle for the last 20 years. It's, but we gotta review it every time.
So, our sewer authority has inserted processes that end up going back and forth with legal that end up costing you, the contractor.
Sure. And it's gonna cost the residents. It is. If there's a problem with their main. Let me just take two minutes and walk you through how it works. So, I'm a developer or a resident who wants to plug into the sewer. I, it used to be $5,000. They've recently dropped it to $3,500, but let's go back to me. I drop off a check for $5,000, okay? Then Clark then generates a contract saying that they are gonna accept your $5,000 because down the road, they're gonna give you a developer's agreement. You then wait to the next authority meeting where the chairperson and a witness can sign off.
And here often maybe?
There once a month. So, if you, you can miss the rotation, now you're two months deep. This is why I'm saying it's gonna be a residence problem too. So, now you're, you could be a month and a half deep, right? Once they accept that, I then have to have an engineer draw up how I'm gonna do this, have two sets of prints delivered. Now, it goes into review by their engineer, okay? They're gonna review it and they pay a little bit of ping pong back and forth. Meanwhile, your escrow's going down, down and down. Once they decide that, okay, you got all your I's dotted, T's crossed, we're gonna move forward. Now, you need the developer's agreement. Attached to that developer's agreement, you need an escrow account, what they believe it's gonna cost. Say it costs $7,000. They believe. You then have to either come up with a letter of credit or deposit that money in there. On top of that, you're gonna pay your $5,600 fee to tap into it. So, for instance, at 538 Spring Moon Avenue, out of pocket, we were about $18,000 in one year before we got to tie into that sewer. And.
And of that $18,000, how much of it was legal fees for back and forth?
Oh, I couldn't tell you that.
And what would it?
Fifty percent?
And, and.
Fifty percent? Thirty percent?
Any idea? Any guess? No?
Twenty-five to thirty percent, I guess, and then some engineering. There might be some money left back in it, which they'll reissue a check. I, that's happened to me once.
She went.
Yeah. But they're saying it would be $200 to do the same process in Plymouth?
Well, you, you, yes, you, you get a registered plumber, fill out the permit forms, and I, you believe you get a road opening. We did it on Caldwell Lane. Get a road opening permit. You dig down, they put the saddle in, you back, the plumber comes out and inspects it and back through you go.
I think the thing here that you have to remember is other, other areas that he works in don't have alleys. Do you work anywhere else that has an alley?
At 1408 Caldwell Lane, we went right back into the, into the, the sewer authority had an easement right in the, in the backyard. Cause they created that when they put the infrastructure in, which they did.
It's very, I mean, I, I mean, we've had many, many conversations, so it's very clear that your, your frustrations and also your concerns. And I think it's, I think council needs to understand them. So, I think it was great that you came tonight to explain exactly what it is that you're dealing with and the issues that you're facing. We'll do our due diligence on the information that you gave us. I can tell you that we're already trying to schedule a conference call with Mike Clark to get to the bottom of it. So, we'll be in touch, but thank you.
And in closing, I think it was just if, if they could attach to this document, this easement document, a letter, why else would I come in and sit at a resident's dining room table? What am I gonna explain to them?
Okay.
I, that was back in June 7th.
Yeah.
Meanwhile, the, the clock's ticking here. I got settlement dates. We're not gonna move in. We're not gonna do the.
Right. It's not, it's not fair that everything else is done on, on our, on our end and your end and you're waiting. So, we agree, we'll look into it.
So, you just need a lay language letter for.
Right.
I don't know where.
For the immediate.
Explain it to the.
Yeah. Yep.
How about contact when I go there? Please contact so-and-so. We give, we're giving Ty the authority to come in and talk to him.
Yeah. Since they punted it back to us.
Well, it's just a shame that that simple of a request took a, being a punting to Borough Council.
Right. And we do understand the point of it's a larger problem also. We, we understand that. We, we've got it.
Developers end of it.
Right.
The infrastructure.
Right.
They're responsible for all of that infrastructure on their property.
But for right now, I think we'd like to just get your part of it done and settled for you. That's, that's our goal, right, Steph? Okay? And we do appreciate all the information, Ty.
On another, another note, Nita, Nita just said to me, how we take the alleys back. That's a good idea.
Thanks, Bob. Thanks, Anita. Oh, my God. Thank you, Ty.
We should take the alley back.
Thank you very much, Ty.
Solve a lot of problems.
Anyone else for a public comment? Nita returned.